Good evening. Welcome to the City of Pleasantville, City Council meeting. Today is September 7th, 2022, and time is 6:30. This meeting has been duly advertised in the city newspaper in conformance with Open Public Act, Open Public Meeting Act, otherwise known as Sunshine Law. Roll call.
Swan. Here. Gavin Ford. Kevin Lara.
Here.
Thomas.
Present.
Kimona.
Present.
Korea.
Present.
Sisdrum. Bobby and Titties.
Make a motion for the approval of the previous meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Danny Clark, the review of the agenda.
Yes, first of the agenda is orders number 14, first reading. It's authorizing and encouraging electric vehicles supply service equipment and make-ready parking spaces.
Any questions?
Question, do we have any locations for this?
Currently, we do not have locations, but what this orders does is prepare the city to accept locations, obviously, where it's in place. If you look at your agenda, orders number 14, which is item one, item number two, item number four, item number five, they're all sustainable jersey items that comes through the green team for us to get our points. Currently, we have, under the sustainable jersey program, we have, we're at the bronze status, and our goal this year for the upcoming renewal is to get to the silver. So if we adopt these policies and practices to become a sustainable community that would help us get to the next level. So we're looking at possible locations, and when you get to Resolution 166, that's a grant that we are recipient of under NJDEP, and we were successful in getting that grant for electric vehicles because we are a participant of sustainable jersey. So we're looking at the public works area. Potentially, we have to have the engineers and others go out to evaluate and assess the location, but we're looking at the public works area for those spaces. At one point in time, we did look at our city hall parking lot, but it didn't have the sufficient electrical poles, and we're being told that we can have conversations with ACE, Electric City Electric, to upgrade the poles at some point in time. So those are the two locations that have been discussed, but it hasn't been confirmed. Thank you. You're welcome.
Any more questions? Questions from the public, right? Then I'll let this turn.
Orders number 15, adopting a green purchasing policy, first reading.
Any questions? See none?
Resolution 166, authorizing a grant agreement between the city and the state of New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection in the amount of $785,346.00 to purchase electric trucks and electric charging station and infrastructure.
Any questions?
I do. How many vehicles are we looking at to buy that?
We're looking at purchasing, which means we have to retrofit three electronic vehicles that were all described under public works as to what the uses are. I don't have that very many vehicles, I'll give you what that is, but there's three, and we're also looking at charging stations as well at the public works locations.
If I may interrupt, the grant was based on us replacing a diesel equipment, so that's what we're always trying to write down by the public works, trash trucks, whatever it is, to, they really pushing up to get rid of this diesel fuel vehicle, that's why we're able to get this.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Danny Clark.
Resolution 167, supporting community solar projects.
Any questions? See none?
Resolution 168, authorizing sustainable municipal water story technical assistance application.
Any questions? See none?
Resolution 169, authorizing New Jersey Department of Community Affairs grant for the UEZ Urban Enterprise Zone fiscal year 2023 administration budget in the amount of $102,068.00.
Questions?
Question, is this Ms. Jacoby's job?
It's not her job, her job is a part of the budget, but it's your UEZ budget. The urban enterprise zone in the state DCA is under a fiscal year, which is July to June, and we're on our calendar year, so this is why you see this on today's orders, on today's agenda. Previously, you approved the 2022 budget, so that was the time for us to get this item on their agenda so it can make their 2023 budget. It includes in the line items a portion of the urban enterprise zone coordinator salary, and it also includes administrative items like a marketing campaign, supplies, consulting fees, et cetera. So it's just your administrative budget for UEZ for 2023.
Okay, 'cause it says $102,000 to carry out a project to fund one staff employee to the administrator, to administer the UEZ.
Right, so that is the redevelopment assistance position, and what we do is supplement out of the current fund, her current salary, half of that comes out of the administrative budget, so that's what you see here, I think it's a little over, it's probably around forty-something thousand dollars of the UEZ money, it's her salary, so we don't have to pay that out of the current budget. So we're not hiring any employees, so that's a question, we're supplementing her salary with the UEZ budget.
Any more questions? Danny Clark.
Resolution 170, proclaiming the month of September as prostate cancer awareness.
Any questions? See none?
Resolution 171, authorizing the city to enter into a shared services agreement with Pleasantville Board of Education for Trash Collection Services.
Any questions?
Question, I know we talked about this in committee, then we come up with a price or then we say we're just going to do this and then come up with a figure?
Yeah, so your cost is not included, because you have to determine what the cost is, this is the agreement to contract out the services. What we will have ACUAA do is do an assessment of what the trash collection is, we wasn't able to get that information because of the pandemic, the school wasn't in full service the last couple of years, but they don't have full service, they're going to do another assessment, see what their trash collection and recycling is, and then we'll insert that amount into that.
Any more questions?
Can I make a friendly amendment, because it's still, it's the same, does substantial form attach there too, to be amended, because it's still underlying?
Okay.
Capes other, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, next is Resolution 172, sell property known as Block 93, Lot 40, actually known as 39 Somerset Avenue for a minimum bid of $23,200.00. But White Council has known that the potential request for this is no longer interested, so when we go into regular session, we will go into motion to open up for the bid, and if no one is here, then we will close it, and we will make a motion to pull the resolution. Next is the view of the bills.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The first thing I looked at is what we paid between the last council meeting, last council meeting, there were really two bills, one was our medical payments for the month, and the other was payroll for the last paying orders. We'll go over the bills, I'm looking to be approved at this time. Some of them, we'll highlight, if you go down to the bottom of page one, Land and County Treasurer, that is our gas cost, it's substantially lower than the last month, we were over $18,000 in the prior month. The fuel prices have dropped from $476 to down for diesel to $403, and from $407 for gas to $347, that's our cost, and victim, a buyer from the county, so we're like $4,000 below what we were the prior month. Go to page two, halfway down is our, again, our dental for our retired and active employees, and then three below that is our monthly payment for our vision service plan for, again, active and retired employees. One next one, Edmund Cove Tech, they back all our financial information up on the cloud, this is a one-time annual fee for that. We have, we have a couple different tile servers, one for the financial, which is Edmund's, and then one for all the other information, which is stored in different platforms. If you want to go, jump over to page four, you'll see, second one down, Power GMS, and what this is, is, for the fire department, police also have it, but this is how they communicate internally with all their employees, and what it does is, they will send out notices, whatever it may be, and when it's opened up, it'll make registers that they had opened it and reviewed it. So what this prevents them from saying is, hey, if something came down that we're supposed to do, I can't say I didn't know about it, or already we have a record that, yes, you did open an email, you know about it.
If I may, in addition to the usage of notifying, that information is a training tool as well, so when there's virtual training, they use the system to sit right there, the system will train it.
Good now, few more, leaves, equipment, emergency equipment, we had a couple little boo-boos I want to say with our fire truck, and this was one of them backed into a dumpster, and then one was hit by a mother car, so these were taken care of that. I know we talked before about, I think they have one, the pumpers having a problem with their holding tank, that's still ongoing, we're still in the process of trying to get that taken care of by Pierce, who actually manufactured the truck. The next one down is Lexa Concrete, this is portion draw one of the work that's been done on Prospect, Tunis, and Harrison Avenue, contractor, I think total contract over $750,000, this is the first draw for that. And if you go to the bottom, maybe down to the bottom of page six, you'll see, roll over to page, I'm sorry, page five, roll over to page six, some from broadly, we had air conditioning problems at the library, which we had to take care of, also some air conditioning problems at the police station, which we've looked at and are working on. Continue on page six, about three quarters way down, Regan Auto, this is something that the school does, this is the school fuel, we pay Regan once we get money back from school, we don't have to pay it. We really don't have anything ourselves for Regan anymore, since we've gone to the county with the gas. We do leave it open in case for some emergency where they were unable to get into the county gas depot, we still have this to fall back plan. And maybe about on page seven, you'll see intercon truck equipment, that would repair one of the big trucks that we had. And then on page eight, all, most of all, all these were, for most part, approved by finance committee, they were either tax exempt properties that were, became tax exempt, were not before, or in a lot of cases, both the owner as well as the mortgage company paid taxes, and we just paid it back. We think what happened is, maybe some new homeowners in town, when you get, when you own a property, and we sent a tax bill to your mortgage company, we sent them a copy to, it's ad vice copy, they didn't realize that they didn't have to pay that, so they came in and paid the bill. So we're just refunding what should have been not paid, you know. Any questions?
Question, page seven, this is Thompson West, New Jersey drunk driving law 2022, who's there?
Which one? Page seven?
Thompson West, page seven.
I think it's Tom West.
Oh, it's 176.
Is Thompson West law, it's the legal research that was done, I guess the research that was done on New Jersey drunk driving law, I mean overstep, but that's what.
They offer statues.
This is a soft one. A soft frame?
Well, the bid, that's the vendor, they do offer programs to returning statues and all.
Okay. AJ? The other one's page five, Spider, $5,000.
That is, again, the contract that we have, that we've been with them, where he gets $4,000 a month for overseeing, the work has to be done with Green Acres, so we get all the permits and everything for that, and then the 16th, the official, $1,096, was agreeing work that, Green Acres that had to be done for that site down at the old progress. Does that nothing to do with construction, or we're obviously going to go to bid for both the dredging as well as the construction work down there, this is kind of pre-bid and stuff that has to be taken care of, the satisfied readers.
So we agreed to pay, you said, $4,000 a month?
Part of the contract, I believe the contract was a little over, maybe like $250,000 for his, for him, as well as all the engineering drawings that were done, the landscaping that was done, you've seen all the specs and everything that were done prior to even now. His cost is $4,000 a month, plus he pays, he prepaid the engineers, and then reimbursed them for the engineering work. I think that was, he has probably gotten maybe $50,000 out of it, the balance of like $125,000 or more been taken up by the engineers.
Thank you. Page three, this is GFOA of New Jersey, a conference for $550?
That's, actually, that's membership for me for New Jersey Government, planning officers.
Okay. Thank you.
And there's a conference we go to, actually in September, I have to continue my education, or my certification, and it's really good to do over there, you get a lot of the stuff in about three days rather than spread it over three years.
Thank you. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Any more questions? See none? Next is the public portion, anybody from the public that'd like to speak on agenda item only, please come forward.
May I lead to read the procedures into the record?
You may.
Okay. Good evening, everyone, we are reading the procedures for public comment during Pleasantville City Council meetings pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act and Resolution of the City of Pleasantville's City Council Number 60-2022. During the open portion of its city council meeting, the City of Pleasantville provides the public with an opportunity to offer comments regarding matters pertaining to the city. Pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, New Jersey statutes evicted 10:4-12, the city is authorized to establish reasonable protocols to permit, regulate, and prohibit public participation in its meetings. Public participation and comment shall be governed by the following rules to maintain order and prevent disruption during each meeting. The rules were passed by Resolution 60-2022. The city clerk, council president, will acknowledge speakers in the order of which their names appear on the sign-up sheet, which is on the podium there. Each speaker will address the city from the podium, and each speaker is asked to begin his or her or their statements or remarks by stating his or her or their name and municipality of residence. Each speaker will have a maximum of three minutes to speak and should limit their comments to matters pertaining to the city. Each speaker will be directed to conclude his, her, or their comments and remarks once the speaker's time has expired. A speaker may not reach to speak more than one time during the same public comment period. No time may be yielded to a speaker by another speaker. Groups are asked to select one spokesperson to speak on their behalf. Three, the city may restrict, limit, or prohibit any speech, remarks, or questions that are repetitive or not germane to any matter not within the jurisdiction of city council. Four, city representatives are not obligated to answer impromptu questions or address remarks from members of the public during the public comment period. Speakers should expect the cities to refrain from engaging in a dialogue except to the extent necessary to clarify the speaker's comment. Absent exceptional circumstances, the city will not take action on an item presented during public comment. Five, the city will not entertain questions or comments called out from the audience. Shouting from the audience without being recognized to speak is strictly prohibited. When appropriate, number six, council president may refer inquiries and items brought up during public comments to the city's employees or other professionals for follow-up. And seven, speakers and members of the public should at all times maintain proper decorum and shall make their comments in a respectful and civil manner. No person shall at any time engage in any personally offensive or abusive remarks to the mayor, city council, city employee, city professional, or any other member of the public. Personal attacks, obscenities, derogatory, and slanderous remarks also will not be tolerated. No person shall engage in any express or implied speech that involves any person of race, color, religion, gender, disability, sexual orientation, gender identity or expression, national origin, or ethnicity. Speakers will not discuss matters regarding the candidacy of any person seeking a public office, including the candidacy of the person addressing the city. President, those procedures are actually at the podium.
Do we have the, yeah, questions? Do we have the list? So everybody from the public, please, if you wish to speak. Any questions?
Yes, question. Could we put this on channel 97?
Sure, yeah, because it's a public comment.
Channel 97?
So is it still 97?
I just wanted to make, I didn't know if I heard you right.
Not that being stated.
Just for clarification, if you speak during this part on agenda items, you still are allowed to come up, so there are two tones.
Yes.
Okay, I just want everybody to know. Thank you so much for that clarification.
Any more questions? At this time, we're open to the public, I have the list to, I'll be.
That list is for public portion, right? Public portion for agenda items.
Yeah, this is.
Exactly.
This is agenda.
This is his public comment.
So this is the public comment, you won't be taking this.
None, okay. Anybody wishes to speak on agenda items, all? Only, please come forward.
Thank you.
Let's see, none? Motion to close public portion. Motion, second. All in favor? Next is not in discussion, any questions or comments from the council? Why?
The only thing I have is, if we do go to like an electric trash truck or something like that, let's keep the diesel one, just in case that the batteries don't get us.
Long as we don't run through the water, it'd be fine.
Okay, all right. I have no comments at this time. Motion to close the work session. Same move, second. All in favor?
Aye.
On Saturday. Good evening, welcome to the City of Pleasantville City Council meeting, today is September 7th, 2022, the time is 10 minutes, 7:00, 6:50. This meeting has been duly advertised in the city newspapers in conformance with the Open Public Act, Open Public Meeting Act, otherwise known as Sunshine Law. Roll call.
I understand what you're proposing.
Sorry, yes, you're right, sorry about that, rookie mistake, just, I'll stand for the NPH, the flex. The flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, law. That's flag, roll call.
Swan.
Here.
Gavin Ford. Kevin Lara, here. Thomas, present. Kimona.
Present.
Korea.
Present.
Sisdrum. Bobby and Titties.
Next is motion to, this is previous meetings, minutes?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aaron?
Unfortunately, thank you.
Danny Clark.
Okay, first is orders number 14, first reading, authorizing and encouraging electric vehicles supply service equipment and make-ready parking spaces.
Mr. Chairman, motion, second.
Roll call, Swan.
Yes.
Kevin Lara.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Kimona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Orders moved to second reading, scheduled for September 19th. Orders number 15, first reading, adopting a green purchasing policy.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, Swan.
Yes.
Kevin Lara.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Kimona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Orders moved to second reading, scheduled for September 19th. Resolution 166, authorizing a grant agreement between the city and the state of New Jersey Department of Environmental Protections in the amount of $785,346.00 to purchase electric trucks and electric charging station and infrastructure.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, Swan.
Yes.
Kevin Lara.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Kimona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 167, supporting community solar projects.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, Swan.
Yes.
Kevin Lara.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Kimona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 168, authorizing sustainable municipal water story technical assistance application.
Motion. Second.
Roll call, Swan.
Yes.
Kevin Lara.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Kimona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 169, authorizing New Jersey Department of Community Affairs grant for the urban enterprise zone UEZ fiscal year 2023 administration budget in the amount of $102,068.00.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, Swan.
Yes.
Kevin Lara.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Kimona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 170, proclaiming the month of September as prostate cancer awareness.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, Swan.
Yes.
Kevin Lara.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Kimona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 171, authorizing the city to enter into a shared services agreement with the Pleasantville Board of Education for Trash Collection Services.
Before you move, could I make a friendly amendment that in the last paragraph, it said states be a further resolved, the city council, the City of Pleasantville wishes to enter into and execute the shared services agreement, and substantial reform attached here too, is exhibit A, the Pleasantville Board of Education subjects all the terms and conditions contained therein and after final approval and review by the city.
Motion.
I'm sorry, do second that?
I did.
Thank you. Roll call, Swan.
Yes.
Kevin Lara.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Kimona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 172, sell property known as Block 93, Lot 40, actually known as 39 Somerset for a minimum bid of $23,200, I need a motion to open up for?
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This time we're entertaining the bids, is that, is that?
Yes, the terms go through the introduction.
So this is a, an option to possibly sell. So this is a, an option to possibly sell property known as block ninety-three, lot forty, also known as thirty-nine Somerset Avenue located in the city of Pleasantville from County Valenik, for a minimum bid of twenty-three thousand, two hundred dollars and zero cents. Notice of the sale has been advertised required by New Jersey statute annotated forty A, colon, twelve dash thirteen A, and the minimum price shall be twenty-three thousand, two hundred dollars and zero cents. A deposit ten percent of the minimum bid shall be required from a successful bidder on the evening of the purchase to be made by cash or certified check payable to the city of Pleasantville. In the event the final purchaser is in that, purchase price is in excess of the minimum bid, the successful bidder shall within seventy-two hours of the bidding, post the additional ten percent of the difference between the minimum bid and the final purchase price. The total deposit placed by the successful bidder shall be retained by the city as a non-refundable deposit and shall be considered as liquidated damages, not as a penalty. If the sale is consummated, is not consummated pursuant to the terms and conditions as set forth herein. Settlement between the city of Pleasantville and purchaser shall take place within thirty days of the date of the sale. The successful bidder shall bear all costs associated with the sale, including advertising, title search, insurance fees, surveys, if any, recording, and legal fees, and/or subdivisions as required. Successful bidder shall also be solely responsible to pay any application fee, if any application fee is required for any municipal or state approvals. In the event the successful bidder is not able to comply with the aforementioned conditions, the city may at its option elect to rescind the sale, and the city shall then repay to the successful bidder the purchase price less ten percent of the purchase price. Nothing contained herein within this process shall be construed to exempt the purchaser from any applicable federal, state, municipal statute ordinance or regulation, and the city of Pleasantville retains the right to reject all bets, not a problem.
Uh, we open the floor for the bid for block ninety-three, lot forty, actually known as thirty-nine Somerset Avenue. Is there anyone here that would like to place a bid? Four months? Twice? Three times? President, there's no one here, so we're gonna need a motion to close the bid.
Motion to close the, uh, second section, motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next having a motion to pull resolution one seventy-two due to no successful, um.
Motion, second. All in favor?
Roll call, Swan.
Yes.
Dammelaro.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Correa.
Yes.
Resolution has been pulled. Next having a motion to pay for bids.
Same move, second.
Roll call, Swan.
Yes.
Dammelaro.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Correa.
Yes.
Motion has been approved. Next is public portion. Uh, before we open, President, I'd like to say if anyone would like to speak, uh, please come up and sign your name on the side machine.
Anyone else that would like to speak before I turn the list in? Anyone out here? No? This time, city will recognize Team Jones.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'd like to be thanked quickly by, um, first acknowledging some good things, I like to try to do that sometimes. Um, I just received my, um, tax bill, and I was so glad to see an insert included there with some information from Atlantic City Electric, better utilizing the facility of getting information to the whole city. I just hope that the electric company paid the postage as well, I think they should, but I think that's a very good move. Secondly, I'd like to mention, um, I appreciate the mayor establishing award meetings that we've been having. Um, one thing that came out of that that was successfully achieved, which I couldn't get done talking to my local, um, my representative council people, is to have trash, um, cans put at the bus stop, um, bus stops on Main Street at these avenues. They're on both sides of the street, and it looks a whole lot crap. Thank you for that. Another issue that I have to confront though is about the air, issue that I thought was a dead issue, that, um, transferred to rail station issue. It came to my attention that this was posted in the press. I noticed that this thing is coming up again, but bigger and better. It was to be spoken of at the planning board, but it was not presented at the planning board meeting, an application, new application. The original application was for a facility at five thousand, eight thousand square foot, and that was dramatically protested against by the community. Um, I'm looking here at resolution one twenty-seven, that was, um, you know, um, approved last year, um, approving this facility. It states that the facility will be operated as a construction and operation home related to, um, construction and operation of a solid waste recycling facility. This is the resolution that was passed to approve going forward with this operation. Looking through information in the application that was subsequently, um, submitted, this is, um, uh, one of the forms that had to be sent to the New Jersey Environmental Protection Agency. Um, this info, this document, oddly, and it looks a faint print, so you don't really want to read it. It says, construction and transfer station for type thirteen, thirteen C bulk waste construction and demolition, demolition debris. Transfer of waste will be via existing on-site rail. No solid waste is included. This is what's being submitted by this gentleman, Dina Talley, to the state. No solid waste is included, and yet we have a resolution here stating specifically solid waste is what you agree to. I see a contradiction there that I think needs to be addressed. That, that's a glaring contradiction in fact. Um, and not to mention the fact that, um, this gentleman originally proposed this to be in his own neighborhood in Galway, and it was across the street or Tilton Road from Blue Harrow, which is a country club, often country club and a residential community. They said, no, you're not going to put that near here, they hired a lawyer, and it did not happen. And so now here he comes to Pleasantville. With a new proposal that stated in the.
Mr. Jones, you can tell me so.
She was to say. Well, just one thing, the new proposal is for a hundred twelve thousand square foot, if you would like, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
City will recognize Urban Moreno Rodriguez, Pleasantville, New Jersey. A question for the lawyer, where can we get a copy of what you read about pertaining to open forum? This is a copy that I can give?
Yes. And I believe directly from you came to Mr. Moreno Rodriguez, uh, Councilwoman Thomas asked for it to be posted on Pleasantville YouTube.
Yes, I heard that, thank you.
On the website, and it'll be on the website.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Can I add one more thing? Can, can we translate that in, uh? So we have the translation ability on the website, so you'll see it in English, and if you want to see it in a different language, the person has to be a translator. Talk about, I'm talking about channel ninety-seven. I definitely get it on the, uh, on the website in a different translation, and I'll work on that, I don't want to speak too quick, but.
Thank you.
We'll make it happen.
I just want to say if it's in a PDF format though, the Google Translate won't translate that.
We'll make sure that it's not. Thank you for that.
So I want to talk about the trash transfer site, and I just want to remind city leadership that there are books, there are experts that you can ask before you take a decision on anything. It took me one minute to find a guide from the federal EPA detailing wage transfer stations, a manual for decision making. Sixty-six pages, alright, it's something that's extremely readable, and I just want to highlight a portion or two, depending on my time. So there's a chapter there called environmental justice considerations. During the site selection process, steps should be taken to ensure that decisions are not imposing a burden on low-income or minority communities. Overburdening a community with negative impact facilities, i.e. the trash transfer site, can create health, environmental, and quality, quality of living concerns. It can also have a negative economic impact by lowering property values and hindering community revitalization plans. That's in the manual. Alright, sixty-six pages, it can totally be read, and there's also a section on what should be done before the vote even takes a hold, right? Which is talking to stakeholders, which has absolutely not been done. It, it has not been done. Community and neighborhood groups have not been approached, industry and business representatives have not been approached. And it's us here, the public, civic and public interest groups, that have taken on this burden. So I ask, in relation to the trash transfer site, talk to your experts. There's been no quality of impact reports done, no one's tested the air. So now when we test the air, when this trash transfer site is here in Pleasantville, we're gonna get results that we can't plan across tests that we haven't done before. Talk to professors, you have Stockton University, Rowan, Rutgers, that have taken these environmental impact reports. Look at these studies, we're talking about harming the health of our children in Pleasantville. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jones. This time, city will recognize Priscilla Noel.
Good evening, everyone, Priscilla Noel. I'm just trying to understand what the purpose is here for the decisions that are made in Pleasantville. Because as far as I see, either someone has a vendetta against Pleasantville, or no one really cares. Because these decisions, as far as the trash transfer, is, um, as this gentleman had said, an economic detriment. Property values will go down for what, four hundred thousand dollars? And then to get a notice in the press that says, oh, to whom it may concern, so caught blanch, like, hmm, that this is what we're doing. So who gave that person the inclination that they could do that? I guess somebody did, because the sign is still there, coming soon. When we had this discussion last year, I was told by this panel, oh, it's gonna come down, it shouldn't have been up. Somebody amongst this municipality, who is an authoritative figure, gave that entity the inclination that they would be allowed to put that there, and then increase it by almost sixfold. So if it's gonna be increased in size by sixfold, let's think about this logistically, fiscally. Then the money should increase sixfold, so instead of four hundred thousand, we should be talking about three million per year. If we're gonna help the residents of Pleasantville. But then again, we're not helping the residents of Pleasantville, because the absekin portion that we service for the sewer only pays two hundred and sixty-five dollars per year for their sewer service, while Pleasantville residents pay almost double that. Explain that, so is that in the interest, the best interest, because I did the math. If they were paying in absekin, those units, four hundred and seventy-seven units, were paying what we're paying? That'd be an extra hundred thousand dollars that the city will be generating in revenue alone, and that's just one little aspect. So if y'all really thinking about this trash transfer, y'all need to think about the benefits and the detriments that are gonna occur. Because it's not fair to just make a decision or give people the impression that they can make a decision, and it don't have an impact, it's gonna have an impact. There will be no other business that wants to come here if there's a big giant trash building in the center of Pleasantville, in the heart of Pleasantville. It is to the detriment, and y'all should refuse this, there are many other things that can happen. Sam's Club was the best thing that y'all did, and then y'all just gave up after that? That makes no sense to me, and I am disappointed that y'all continue to make these detrimental decisions, these fiscally unsound decisions against the residents of Pleasantville. People who are lifelong residents, who are caring about this, no input from them. This makes no sense to me. Two hundred and sixty-five dollars they paying in absekin for their sewer, what makes them better than us? I'm confused.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Council recognized, uh, David Arcantara. This is David Arcantara.
Thank you. Jose W. Arcantara, I'm a city resident here. I'm gonna hand out a couple of things I have to make copies of, can I go this way or that way? Okay. Alright, doesn't it want copy of that one? Um, it has come to my attention, and I'm gonna investigate it, that, uh, someone in the city who's a prominent person has previously represented Mr. Dina Talley. And when you represent someone previously, and you also represent the city's interest, it's called a conflict of interest. And I believe that could be this solicitor, and once we're lawyers here in the West Hill, Rules for Professional Conduct, Barney, gave three copies of that, RPC one point seven and one point eight, saying you cannot represent concurrently or past prior client unless you do full disclosure, otherwise it's a violation. So we got, unfortunately, and I hate to bring that up, find out about that. Um, there is also, um, the City of Pleasantville, chapter twenty-seven, the code of ethics of the members here. Now, at this point, I'm not saying anyone here is doing anything wrong, but they can be new whatsoever financial tie to any prospective new business applicant, because even just sitting with them in a bar and having a conversation about the money, the ways to be done, can be deemed to be a violation of that. Chapter twenty-seven, it's, and I gave a copy to the mayor, I mean, it's a tough job you guys got, it really is. And I don't want you to think that these good people here are coming because they're against Pleasantville, no, we're for it. And I'm here, like this gentleman said, bring people, contact people, easy people, we'd be more than happy, uh, Stockton. And that was a, to give you information, background, you're so busy, and that's understandable, that it's hard to think of these alternatives. For, you know, for, so, so I'm here available, uh, to, you know, give you, um, suggestions. But those are the things that I'm concerned about, and, you know, a little bit on the side, there's a lot of businesses on Washington Avenue, there were Muslim cemetery, there's the press, there's other businesses, that when all these trucks are coming in, four hundred plus, I believe, trucks per day or more in the frame, um, this is gonna be blocking traffic. Uh, Asia, uh, the big shopping center, it's gonna be blocked off, that's, that's gonna be a major problem too, not just the possible pollution. Thank you so much.
Thank you, very much, Senator.
President, what's up? Can I have a moment to respond?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. So, good evening, everyone, I serve as the city solicitor for, uh, the city of Pleasantville, my firm is Cooper Levinson. Um, I believe that there were some representations made on the rules of professional conduct with regard to conflict of interest. There is a stated conflict of interest with the Dina Talley firm and Cooper Levinson, which has been expressed since the inception of our representation of the firm. That has not just been the only one, there have been several that have been discussed here where I've prominently left the room when those discussions have occurred. Uh, we've discussed, and I believe a council meeting about a month and a half ago, that Cooper Levinson had a conflict with, uh, the transfer station issue. I've never been part of that, but as parliamentarian for the purposes of today, number three states that the matter has to be within the jurisdiction of the city council. And at this moment, my understanding is, not speaking legally, but speaking jurisdictionally, that my understanding is the transfer station is not within the jurisdiction of the city council, it's within the jurisdiction of the Pleasantville Planning Board, of which notice was provided too, and the notice which was referenced this evening addressed that that was Pleasantville Planning Board. Again, that is not the city of Pleasantville, city council, it is its own instrumentality, with its own rules, and its own attorney, his name is Joe Fleischman. So that, for purposes of tonight, is not germane to the business of the city of Pleasantville, nor is there a conflict to be stated on the record, because I am not the Pleasantville Planning Board attorney. So I hope to answer any questions, and I'd be happy to defer to the council.
That's it for the public. Let's, let's just clarify something, once they come in and get on the list, whoever gets on the list gets to speak. Am I correct? Okay, so I need a motion to close the public. All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Next, we have any comments from Mayor, City of Council?
I'd just like to say, good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out. Um, we hear your concerns, but as the solicitor said, everything now is in the hand. As far as the transfer station, everything is with the planning board. As I stated last meeting, we have had no further discussions about the, um, the transfer station because it's in the hands of the planning board. So, um, the notice that went out, it went out in error, I mean, it went out and then there was a mind change or whatever, but we can't do anything about the vendor and what he decides to do as far as the planning board when all the paperwork and everything is in, it will be on, you know, it will be heard by the planning board. And on a happier note, like Mr. Tim Jones, Pleasantville Greyhounds won their first basketball game on Friday. I mean, football game, football, first football game. Last year, I understand, they didn't win any, so they got, they're off to a great, great start. So we gotta support them. And, um, the other thing is that, um, I do encourage everyone to come out to the ward meetings. The next one is going to be Tuesday at five-thirty at the library. Wards one and two combined right now because, you know, because of the size, we have the space to do that there right now. And, um, on, uh, last month, we had a concert at the waterfront and that was well attended. The weather was good, it was well attended and it was just a good time to be had by everyone that attended in Pleasantville. We don't get to do that a lot, but hopefully in the future we'll be doing more of that, more other feel-good things. Thank you for coming out and everyone have a good evening.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for coming out. Uh, also want to say that on the twenty-first, we'll be having another food distribution at Church of God. So let everybody know, please come on and get us blessed. Thank you and have a blessed night.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out. Uh, I just, uh, I've been seeing signs about, uh, this triathlon or whatever it's called coming through town on the tents. So you're, uh, playing your way easily. I mean, it's, it's tough. I had a hard time getting around the last one, so just play your day. Thank you.
Um, I just, school's open. I hope everybody takes great care in driving, getting to where you need to go. But make sure you keep your eyes open for school buses when they have to sign out that says S T O P, that you S T O P. And please be mindful of children walking in the crosswalks. Your vehicles are supposed to yield to those crosswalks. And if parents are dropping your children's, children off at school, particularly where there's a crossing guard and we have numerous crossing guards, please cross with the crossing guards. Pleasantville pays for our crossing guards. They're there to be used and they're there for our children's safety, so please do it. Mayor, you are two for two on your jazz fest. If anybody thinks there's anything wrong with Pleasantville, go to the jazz festivals because it's a panacea. It will cure all of your guilt. There is nothing better than that waterfront, marina and jazz. So it was wonderful and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Pass more talks.
A monthly report, um, from the recreation, um, committee. Just a reminder that we do have a road that's going on, boxing and basketball, soccer and, um, weight and health and wellness room is also open. Uh, we did have some special events, um, last month. We had a big crusher held the All White Affair on August the sixth and also he held a back-to-school bookbag giveaway on August the twenty-seventh. That was a great event as well. Um, just to piggyback off of, uh, what the mayor said, congratulations once again to the Greyhounds. It was an excellent game and I'm just asking if they can have more, um, participation at their game, if you will, Ken? Um, Dr. Lappel, not to put you on the spot, but if possible, could you please give us the, um, their schedule? You know, so we can hand it out and so we know, so we can pass that information on. Um, once again to the parents, grandparents, everyone here, happy twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And, um, like I said, Greyhounds, let's go.
All right, lastly, I just want to thank everybody for coming out today, expressing your concerns. I hope you can all hear me back there. Everybody can hear me? Okay. And, um, thank you for coping with me, uh, leading the council today. It was a such a short note.
Great job.
Thank you, guys. Good night.
Motion closed.
Sorry, motion. Rookie mistake. I'm motioning to, all right. Motion.
Second.
Thank you, guys.